Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on November 7, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to remind everybody that today is Election Day and the polls are open until 8:00. And if you have any questions, please call the Auditor's Office. They'd be more than happy to help you. With that, do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward or raise their hand, we'll close public comment number one. We have no agency reports. We'll move to consideration of proclamation recognizing November 6 through 12, 2023 as Operation Green Light in Story County. Supervisor Hens?
Sure. Whereas the residents of Story County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country. That, is that right? And this community and the armed forces. Okay. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who have served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas Story County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid a high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for all, for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members across more than, more than, access more than $52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits and
whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service.
And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Story County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes special recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 6 through 12, 2023, as Operation Green Light Week in Story County. And with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Story County hereby declares this as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. In observance of Operation Green Light, Story County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by laying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. I move the proclamation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Do we want to move to the next proclamation right away and then do pictures? Okay. Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing November 11 through 18, 2023, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Supervisor Merkin?
Whereas for the past 30 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Story County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations.
And whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, which include but are not limited to Assault Care Center Extending Shelter and Support Access, The Bridge Home, Food at First, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Mid-Iowa Community Action, Story County General Assistance, The Hunger Collaboration, Salvation Army, Veterans Affairs, Youth and Shelter Services, as well as various area churches and food pantries. Whereas the focus of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2023 continues to be volunteer, donate, educate.
And whereas the intent of National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week is consistent with the commitment and dedication of the members of the Two Rivers Committee and the Homelessness Prevention Team to educate the community and to provide the needed services and support to citizens who suffer from hunger and our homelessness circumstances. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 11 through 18, 2023, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Story County. We recognize that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families here and encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and and private and public nonprofit service entities. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And then do pictures right now?
Who do we have here? Veterans of errors.
Thank you. Big giant water. Hi there. So, thank you. Hi. Good to see you again. Yeah. My goodness. I mean, yeah, come up right here. Smile, will they? Are we centered? That's what they got. Can you see all of us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks. I like it when we have a big group coming for pictures. Moving now to consideration of minutes from October 31, 2023.
I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of Personnel Actions.
I move approval of personal actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of Claims?
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consent Agenda, we're going to pull item should have 11. To make a correction. So consent agenda minus item 11.
Move Approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Item 11, we need to just make a note to add Tim Patterson from IT. He was inadvertently left off the formal list of the Go Green Team members.
I move approval of the addition of Tim Patterson to the Go Green Team members for the revised members of the Go Green Team on that for consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
We have no public hearing items today. Under additional items, we have discussion and consideration of request for proposals for ADA compliance evaluation and recommendations for restrooms located within multiple county-owned public buildings.
Good job. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, just a little background on this is in 2018, there was some new ADA regulations that came out. Most of them pertain to restrooms. Our current restrooms on our facilities are ADA compliant. It's just as we've got this large space needs project that we've been working on last few years, which a lot of the buildings have some proposed potential remodel type work done in them. I figured the next step is evaluating all of our restrooms so we can kind of capture what all we might want to consider if we were to do a different project in that building. So I figured it is a budgeted project we have on, so these managers books this fiscal year, so here we create a proposal, just get a RFP out to get some proposals to see what those costs would be.
Sounds good.
So you're just looking at having a contractor come in and make the determination, make the determination of what what changes need to be made or what would make it better to be ADA compliant?
Yeah, basically just go through all of our restrooms and primarily looking at the 2018 updates and see which ones may or may not need, need attention.
You're specifically just looking at restroom facilities?
Yes, because then all of our buildings meet the most recent outside of 2018 ADA regulations. And like I said, in 2018, it was the restrooms were like it was reevaluated. It's mostly turning radius and stalls and that kind of stuff, so they're the only ones that would be into consideration. The rest of our facilities already meet ADA compliance.
I feel like we talked about it a lot during the space needs study, whether, you know, garbage can here.
Yeah, a lot of them, it's just
like little tweaks.
Moving, potentially moving some of the fixtures, yeah, like paper towel dispenser. Some of them might include enlarging some of the stalls. It just depends.
I know this is just looking at ADA stuff, but is there a way to look also at providing some more single restrooms that can be used by anybody rather than have men's and women's restrooms? Is that, is there a way to kind of look at that as well in this?
With additional fees probably, I think, as we were when we got closer to doing construction projects in the buildings is when we was going to look at adding the restrooms.
Okay, that would make sense. That would make sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. My only reason for asking some of my questions is I've been working with Erin Rehorts of hopefully putting together like a disability advisory council that could help provide input, but obviously we don't have that together yet, but that would have been a great project to work with them on as well as that. So, but I think it's great that we're looking to update.
Yeah, I think they could probably still be involved in it right now if you're just looking to find it.
Yeah, we're just, we're, we're in the early stages, so we're just getting some proposals and then, you know, we're, we'd be months down the road before we were really diving into a deal.
Great. Any other questions for Toby?
Need a motion?
Yes, please, if you're ready.
Okay. I would move that we approve sending out RFP for an ADA compliance evaluation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we have discussion on the process of future heavy equipment purchases for secondary roads due to long lead times. Morning, Darren.
Good morning. Well, sir. All right, this item is somewhat tied to the next item, so this will give you a lot of background information before the next item comes up. But what I'd like to talk to the board about is specifically our dump trucks. They're now to the point where they're two to three years out from ordering them. That's getting difficult to budget for, and there's some price increases that come up that were unanticipated after the board has already approved it. When the truck comes in, there's an additional cost. And they've actually written that into their contracts now where take it or leave it, you pay the increased cost or you can walk away.
Yeah.
And they can sell it very easily, so that's a new thing for us. The budgeting issue, we've kind of crossed that point now. We, last winter, we pushed off ordering the trucks till end of January, so we at least had some budget discussions before you ordered them. But I think now we're to the point, we got to get these trucks ordered even before that budget's even discussed, so that kind of puts the board in a tough position. But at the same time, if we wanted to back out of those trucks in the future, I don't think we'd have a problem doing that. They'd be able to sell them very easily, so that's just an item to think about. I'm probably going to get a couple more truck quotes to bring to the board in the next month or two and have some time to think about that before then, if you actually want to approve those. Now, the next, this might help you understand what's happening. The trucks essentially have two parts to them. We have the body and the chassis, and then we have the snow equipment portion that includes the box and everything. The snow equipment's actually more expensive than the truck itself. But the truck part is what's they're coming back, they aren't ever sure, they continue to evolve the emission standards on these vehicles and every new model has an increased cost, but they don't know what it is till it comes out. So we currently have three trucks, tandems that are on order. And that's what this next board agenda item is. They've, they're showing us the increases, even though we've approved the costs, there's an increase. So that's on the truck side. We can just assume now on the truck side, there's going to be an increased cost. The good part of that is, I don't know if you've heard of SourceWell, it's kind of a government purchasing. They pick all these prices off of SourceWell, so it's not like it's, they just, they're increasing costs off the cuff and so there is a somewhat of a set price and they just wait for that to come out when, when they give us these, what the truck's going to cost in the future. The other issue is with the snow equipment side in the box, they're able to get that stuff in much sooner. So we, we order a truck and approve it, and they can get that probably in within six months to a year where the truck's taken two to three years. So they're asking us, do you want us to just order that stuff and have it sitting here in our shop? But they expect us to pay for it when it shows up. So we would have parts sitting in a shop for a year to two years out of our control, not knowing probably, I don't know if it'd be insured or anything. I've kind of talked to Lisa about that a little bit, and we're pretty uncomfortable with that. So we would prefer to handle that the same as the chassis part. We just hold off, there could be increased costs in the future when the truck gets closer to delivery and we just need to accept that. And like I said, that comes off a SourceWell list for government agencies, so it's a set price. But we just got to assume we're going to pay that price in the future. So back to the, the budgeting. We probably have lost two years now on our truck orders, so we're behind. And I don't see us ever catching up with that unless we order a bunch of trucks out in the future. That's why I want to get a couple more trucks at least in in the hopper there getting ordered, so I'll bring those soon. The other issues, we've got the, one of the price increases is the semi and trailer out of this current fiscal year. Lisa had put that as a lost budgeted item to pay for out of lost funds. We kind of just got an update on that semi and trailer today that it, there's no way that's going to come in this fiscal year. It's going to be an actually a 25 model year truck, so more likely about a year from now, we're not going to see that, so we'll have to talk to Lisa about a couple options, either we're going to get a tandem in the spring probably. We could shift that lost money over to that, or if she can carry lost money over, we can pay for a portion, the trailer, we can get with the semi much sooner out of this fiscal. But the semi won't be till next fiscal, so there's a couple options there. We'll have to see what Lisa prefers. I don't know if she can carry lost funds over from one year to another if we have to get those spent. So depending on what she says, I'll come back to the board with how we plan to proceed with that. There's a lot of information there. Any questions about that?
So we have three trucks on order now?
Yes.
Okay.
One should come this spring, and we hope the other two, we ordered two at the same time, so hopefully those are a year out. I should say, I mentioned we're, we're kind of behind two years now. Last winter, we probably averaged three trucks down at any given point. One truck in particular was down all season because it was a part and parts are hard to get right now, so that truck was out and that wasn't even one of our older trucks. So the other two were just ones that as soon as we got one fixed, another one broke down, so there's always two more sitting there. If we take this much longer, if we go down four trucks, there'll be a visible decrease in service that people will see. We can get by with three because we have about two spares and people help out, but we get down four trucks, people are going to notice service, so.
So are we still waiting for the part from last winter?
We still got, we got that fixed.
Okay.
So we're up to speed.
They have basically two trucks that are always
That's just what we averaged last winter. They're constantly breaking down. The older they get, that's going to happen. But it's mostly with these emissions systems or, and they're expensive fixes unfortunately, but nothing we can do about that, but hopefully we can get the parts.
Right.
Darren, my question is on the updated price and the pre-approved equipment.
Yep.
So like where it shows on here, the tandem trucks have $598,000. Is that the updated? I don't recall what the original was. The difference, I guess I'm wondering in those.
Yeah, if you want to get into that item a little bit here, that one was actually decreased. They, they kind of planned ahead and bumped that cost up a little bit, just trying to guess what it would be. And so that was for two trucks, the 598. Originally, it was 6,000 a piece more, so 12,000, this is 12,000 less than what you originally approved. That's good news. It went down. The other two pieces went up about the same amount. I think overall, it's about $1,200 more for all three of these things.
That's not too bad.
Yeah, so that's not too bad, but that's because they, they guessed kind of high on the two trucks.
Okay, so this is, this is for already ordered and just approving the updated prices.
Correct. Now, what these do not reflect is, like I mentioned, the stuff at Hawkeye for the snow equipment, they're going to want paid as soon as that stuff shows up. If we don't want it sitting there for these, the two trucks that are further out, that cost is probably going to increase later on, so I'll probably back again with those two trucks, with the cost.
But they can, but the taking possession of them now doesn't make sense.
I'm not in favor of it.
Just sit there.
They'll just sit there, we'll pay for them and
They'll depreciate and we're not using them.
And they're, and they're sitting there.
And that portion is about 156,000, so that's, we got that sitting there, not knowing what's happening to it.
Right, right.
Oh yeah, because it'll be at their warehouse, not ours.
Not ours.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to ship them up here and then ship them back when the trucks come in.
Right.
Plus you don't want them sitting there for however long.
Well, and are we guaranteed they fit the trucks?
That part, yeah, we'd be pretty certain that would happen, but uh, yeah, since Lisa's here, what are your thoughts on, can you carry lost money over?
Absolutely.
Okay, it'd probably be cleaner if we could do it that way then. But it's probably going to be about a year from now, the semi trailer. We might, we should get the trailer in the fiscal so we can pay a portion of it.
A portion of it. Yeah, actually, anything unspent in local option sales tax is always assigned and carried forward on a rolling basis, so I'll just reamend or amend it in next year if we carry it forward.
Great.
Okay.
So are there any other questions on?
No.
And we're on item three.
Or the other one?
Before you do that, I just wanted to point out there was a couple typos on that item three. The single axle for 149, that, that is the semi, not the single. We don't have a single axle in it. And then the next item is the tandem where it says semi for 287. That should be another tandem truck.
Do you have an international tandem trucks?
Yeah.
The semi truck and then an international single tandem truck?
There's three tandems and one semi.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I move approval of the updated price on the pre-approved equipment purchase order for two international tandem trucks for $598,304. The international semi truck at $149,069, and the international tandem truck at $287,424.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of tree removal at the Justice Center. Good morning again.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Okay. This one here is in reference to some trees that are basically blocking some camera views on the perimeter of the Justice Center building itself. Been a little over a two-year project we've been working on enhancing security at that building, and we recently got new exterior cameras installed and realized we got some trees blocking views, so you can see in the pictures, the ones in reference, and they greatly reduce the view of the parking lot of the facility. So discussing with Mica, we felt the best course of action was to remove the trees. And currently in this fiscal year, so these managers already got a tree replacement project happening because we lost 27 ash trees on the property over the last couple of years, so we just we could remove the trees, plant, replace them in other areas of the property that wouldn't impede the view of the property, and we could absorb those costs into the current budgeted funds we have for the, the tree replacement project. But we figured since they were mature trees that don't have anything wrong with them, and they're on the front lawn of the property, we should probably better discuss it with the three of you first.
So are any, several years back, there was a tree planted for Judge Finn's, is that one?
It's not one of these.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any questions?
No, I hate seeing large mature trees.
I do too.
Go down, but certainly understand.
Absolutely. Okay. There are no other questions? I entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the request to remove the trees at the Justice Center.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving next to discussion and consideration of Resolution 24-33, Kimberly Farms subdivision class two, major subdivision preliminary plat.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
So before you today is the preliminary plat for Kimberly Farm Subdivision. So this land is owned, the, the reason for this is Landis owns this piece of land that needs to be enlarged is what it comes down to. There was a ag subdivision that created this area to begin with, and once the ag subdivision happened, the only way to change any of it was through a major subdivision, so that's why we had to go through this process, which is a little bit more in-depth. So this is just south of Collins. The Landis owns the northern piece there. They are planning on moving their anhydrous ammonia tanks that are in the Collins area further away from the city limits. Tanks that are in the Collins area further away from the city limits, um, so this is a big safety thing. So we've gone through this here. Again, the, the biggest thing is we're not creating any new. Development lots here, this is just for the increase in their size of their parcel so that. Um, their driveway can come in and they needed separation for their driveway from where the new anhydrous tanks are gonna be sitting. So this just provides them a loop basically to make their roadway. Here is the proposed. Subdivision, as you can see, there's just a couple acres further south there, um, that they would be obtaining. All the other lines of the area are staying the same, so it's just that shifting that and we couldn't do it through. Any other means, so. So we did get written confirmation from utility providers that they can, uh, provide services, fire chief acknowledged the plans for this. We did get an email yesterday that I forwarded to all three of you. Regarding. Someone in the area having concerns about the storage of anhydrous ammonia and how much. Can be there, um, but that's not something that we regulate, so. So we did get, that, we had gotten a phone call and the person wasn't able to attend, so they also sent that email, so I could forward it on to you. Um, so that's what that comment is regarding that we received previously, we did notify everyone within a quarter mile. So when Landis was rezoned, we would have notified everyone within a quarter mile of just that parcel, right? So from there. The email that we received, that person wouldn't have been notified because they're further than a quarter mile from. The Landis, that corner that they currently own, the reason that they got a notice here, because. They, if, when you looked at the plat, it was that whole area, so they actually touch a boundary with what's technically being changed. Um, so obviously they would get a notification and one within a quarter mile there, so as far as that piece of that email. They just wouldn't have received a notification for distance purposes.
Thank you for walking us through that.
Yeah, yeah, that one wasn't a very specific one, that was like, I can really clear that piece up about how that works, so. Um, and that goes for, you know, ninety percent of what we do is a quarter mile, so. So everyone has, um, everyone involved has indicated they agree to plat, their formal written consent isn't required. We have that final plat, um, which, because the major process, have this one and then we'll bring back the final. Again, no new additional development lots being created, uh, all the standard, all the requirements have been met. And any divisions would have to go through this process again, so any future divisions would have to go through this. Once this is completed though. If they needed to adjust their boundary line though, because it'll all be part of the same subdivision, that'll be a little bit easier for them. Instead of having to go through this whole process for. Two acres, so.
But if, if they do that, there'll still be the notification required to all of the.
Yep.
People within a quarter mile.
Marcus, I do have a question. I mean. It was a comment that you made, I know the, the email that you shared with all of us, the person was concerned about. The amount of anhydrous ammonia on the land, and I think you just said you regulate that or watch that.
We do not.
You do not, okay, that's what I was, that's what I was, I, I thought I heard you, but I wasn't sure that that was correct, so.
We do not, we do not have anything that regulates that.
Okay, that's what I thought, so, okay.
And currently they have anhydrous tanks within the city limits.
Right, or right up against the city limits, and there was an issue.
So much closer than a quarter mile.
Yeah, and a few years ago, there was an issue.
Yeah, I remember there was, um, yeah, there was a leak.
Yeah, um, and so this will further remove any storage from being way closer to Collins. So, and the closest neighbor is, the closest residence is. Just over like fourteen hundred feet to the south of. The existing Landis boundary. So. And with that. The Plains Only Commission. At their meeting recommended approval with the condition that the applicant provide confirmation that utility providers' ability to serve the subdivision. In the future, prior to the preliminary plat being reviewed, they did, um, so. Then there are your alternatives with, um, option one being the one that's being recommended.
So if we approve this, when would you be bringing it back?
For fun. One, once we have all of the final documents from all the landowner, they've all agreed to it, but it's just. Getting everyone in a room to finish up signing the, what are the documents that need to be, um, I would assume within a couple of weeks. If, if we can get all the paperwork back from them for those finals.
And you said they, they've worked with emergency responders.
It's been notified to the fire chief, and, um, I don't think. Emergency management had any comments, um, regarding moving it out. And utility providers have provided confirmation, so.
Okay.
Did it go to emergency management, because I don't see them listed under interagency review team.
I'll have to.
We double check that.
I'll, I'll double check that, but, um, for things like this, we. If they didn't have any comment, it might have just been an e- email like, hey, do you guys want to say anything about this? Maybe if they didn't have anything, so.
Okay, and I, and I, yeah, maybe you could just double check on that.
Yeah.
Because I know they were.
Send you guys an email.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, any, any further questions?
I do not. I do have a question, if we were to make a motion, for example, do you need the reference to the condition that you have on there as well?
That condition was what, why we hadn't brought it forward, we were waiting for that, we got it. Now we brought it forward.
Yeah, okay, 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 thank you, uh, then I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three, the major subdivision preliminary plat. Of Kimberly Farms subdivision plat two as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Uh, we have no departmental reports, other reports, uh, any upcoming agenda items?
I will, it might not be for a couple weeks, uh, with the Salvation Army for their vehicle maintenance, um, program, so.
Look forward to that. Uh, Supervisor Merkin, any upcoming agenda items?
Okay, uh, moving now to public comment number two, comments from the public not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments. Committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors, Supervisor Merkin, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm gonna participate this afternoon in ICAP law enforcement training webinar. It's about police responding to emergency medical. Situations, I'm pretty interested in that. The next two days, I'll be in Mason City at the Midwest WMA meeting, and there are gonna be, um, folks from. Iowa and surrounding states who are involved in watershed management and water quality, and I'm really looking forward to that. I will miss the quarterly nine-one-one service board meeting, but Supervisor Basil's gonna attend that for me. Um, coming back Thursday afternoon, a meeting with emergency management on some issues, and then. In the evening, I'll be at the Farm Bureau Board meeting, uh, we're going to talk about water quality issues. Friday is a county holiday, but I will be at the AEDC Executive Board meeting at noon. The next Monday. Um, Conservation Board in the evening, do we have an opioid discussion?
Yes.
Internal.
Internal, okay. Got it, never mind, so that's, that's my week till the next board meeting.
Busy.
Uh, I'll be here today, tomorrow I have a meeting with Nate Thompson, the Story Medical. Um, I'm gonna hopefully either attend, uh, the grand rounds over at Mary Greeley, they were talking about physicians. Prescribing, surgeons prescribing opiates, so just wanted to hear some new information on that. I have the NACO, um, Economic and Workforce Monthly Meeting. Uh, Thursday, I have animal control recognition on my calendar, Friday, I have Veterans Day, want to thank all the veterans. For all that they have done and to recognize them on Friday the tenth. And then on Monday, I have a Aging Resources Personnel Meeting, um, and I also had the Rotary, or excuse me. The opioid discussion in the afternoon.
Also very busy. Tomorrow I have, I'm attending the, um, without saying a word, training. Here, and then tomorrow evening, I have a Women of NACO Executive Committee Meeting. And then attending the E nine-one-one Service Board Meeting Thursday. Um, Animal Control Recognition in the morning, and then a boost meeting in the evening. Friday, um, also want to say thank you to the veterans for everything that you have done for us and sacrificed. And continue to sacrifice, um, and then, um. Friday morning, I will be recording part of an introduction for the Symposium, um, on Building Inclusive Organizations. And then attending, um, Legislative Roundtable at the Chamber, and then Friday evening, I am going to be. In dispatch with Story County Sheriff's Office, I'm gonna spend several hours there, just kind of hanging out and. Seeing what they're doing, um, learning a lot. And Monday, I've got a Story County Opioid Task Force meeting in the morning, um, Women in Leadership meeting in the afternoon. And then opioid discussion. Here, and then Tuesday morning, we have the Treasurers' Recognition.
Right.
We do.
Yeah. Okay, it, there's nothing else?
I move adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned, thank you.